Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you very much for attending. Wait a minute, who is that character? I don't know. Uh, I'd like to call to the work session for April the 8th. Uh, our first order of business is a presentation regarding the Flugerville Library. Jennifer Ritz-Wall, the director, Daniel Bera, is it Bera?
Bera, like Yogi.
Like Yogi Bear, any relationship?
Uh, no, but my grandfather did grow up in the same neighborhood, Italian neighborhood in San Diego.
Cool.
That's really cool.
Well, welcome. Tell us about the library.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm gonna give you a quick update on the library, what we've been up to. A lot of y'all know the history of the library, but some people don't, so I'll give you a real quick rundown of that. In 1981, the Austin Public Library quit sending the bookmobile out to Flugerville. So, a group of stalwart women in the community decided that Flugerville needed its own library. So, the Friends of the Library were formed at that time. Um, this is their 44th anniversary this year. Um, and once they formed that, they had bake sales, they had garage sales, et cetera, until they raised enough money to open a storefront, and then the rest is history.
Can you tell me what that storefront is? I should know what it is, but I don't.
I think it's Taco House now.
Oh, yeah, or the old, the original post office, which, yeah.
Could be, yeah. Um, so it's a vault, obviously, and we are currently in the building that was opened in 2012, so the expanded building. Friends of the Library are huge, obviously. They started the library. We did lose one of, we lost the last, I believe, original Friend of the Library this year, Audrey Deering. She passed away. Um, she was a wonderful woman and very active in the community and a great champion of literacy. So, we miss her a lot, but the Friends of the Library are still very much a part of our library, and they support us in a lot of ways, which I'll talk about in a little while. Our mission hasn't changed. We're still here to serve everyone in the community in whatever way we can. We still adhere to the Library Bill of Rights and the Freedom to Read Statement. And we still have an awesome staff. So, I'm just missing one headshot on here because she's new. She only started about two weeks ago. Uh, but this is our staff, our current staff. We have 27 people on staff, including Daniel and I. And I believe we have nine professional librarians on staff, so that's great. But our desk staff and our other programming staff are also amazing because we have people who have backgrounds in photography, in teaching, in archaeology, in music, you name it, um, and they're all there to share their talents. So, we use them a lot in a lot of different ways. Okay, uh, everybody loves numbers, right? Um, so in 2024, we had almost 3,700 volunteer hours worked at the library. We have 165 volunteers right now, and they saved the city $76,818 in their man-hours. Uh, I believe they put in over 460 hours last year.
What's the, that savings? How's that calculated? I see the number of hours worked, but if I did that division, what would the number be?
We track the, um, the hours worked and we average the salary, and so then we apply the, the salary.
Yeah, right.
Roughly $20 an hour.
Okay, thank you.
So, that's how we come up with that. Um, we have 33,685 members of the library. Those are active members, um, which is just over half, I think, the estimated population in 2023, which is great, but, um, obviously, some of those cardholders are not residents of Flugerville. But, um, it's really great for any library to have over half, um, the number of people having cards as they have in the population.
Do you have any way to, to track that? I mean, my, my library card is older than my youngest child, um, and I know a lot of people, you know, they move into Flugerville and move, move out. Do we have any idea who still has a card that lives in the huddle, or?
Um, we do, um, if their card is still active. Now, the cards do expire after three years.
Oh, well, I'm carrying an expired card, then.
Probably, unless we snuck in there and renewed it. Um, but, and then they, after a certain amount of time, they're purged out of the system automatically. So, we're not counting, um, cards that are, are not being used.
So, these are active, active cards?
These are active cards, yes.
Okay, so these are cards that have been used at least once in the last three years?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, we have over 102,000 physical items in the library, and that's a value of almost $1.8 million. We conducted over, and I say we, it was my awesome staff, conducted over 1,000 programs last year, and we had over 30,000 attendees. Um, it is not quite up to where it was pre-pandemic, but we are slowly getting up there, so I feel good about it.
Are you about at the same number as 2018?
Um, I actually have the numbers here. I don't have 2018, of course. It starts with 2019.
And you're below the 2019 number, but?
Library visits.
If I recall, 2019 was a very big year.
Yeah, I don't have, I'll get that to you. I don't have the, um, program numbers on here. I have the visits, but not the program numbers.
I'm curious on how active those 33,000 cards are. Like, do we know, like, the average books or, you know, activity that they have in a year?
I, we can track that. We can run a report on that. I haven't done it, but absolutely.
Do you know what your total circulation was?
Yes. Our total circulation for 2024 was 587,007. That's electronic and, um, print materials.
So, that's an average of about 12 uses per card?
It does.
Okay, so about 15 items per cardholder?
Yeah.
I'm on the higher end of that, but my daughter was not happy that, uh, the, the number was from seven to six per month at Hoopla. She was like, why'd they reduce it? She uses it every month, but.
Yeah.
Do you have information about, uh, the electronic checkouts versus physical checkouts and how that's?
We do. We track that. Um, last year, we had 276,982 physical checkouts and 320 and 25 electronic, um, checkouts and downloads. So, it's, um, if, and I've done this before. I didn't bring the numbers with me, but, um, I do look at our budget versus the, you know, whatever collection. So, if, our budget for the electronic, our budget for the print, and it's actually pretty even. Like, sometimes the print will creep up a little bit as far as checkouts go, and sometime it's the electronic. I don't have any, I haven't been able to make sense of why, but, um, it does. It's kinda. But the overall number remains pretty even, and, um, the budget for each remains.
Jennifer, and you may not, this may not be legal. So, is there, you don't have any idea in terms of the, the utilization by our senior community versus the general population?
Um, we, we do have, we don't actually track age that much. I mean, we do adult and children. Um, we could start asking that. A lot of people, though, use the library that don't have cards. So, we have a lot of people coming in that just wanna come in for programs or to use the computer or the Wi-Fi, um, or have, you know, a quiet place to study.
No, that's not necessary. I'm just curious.
Okay. All right. Um, moving on. I think I'm doing something. There we go. Nope, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, don't let me around, um, electronic things. Okay, so the library has something for everyone. Um, our programs are everything from infants through seniors. Uh, we have programs for people who are housebound. So, if they can't get to the library, we have, um, programs for them, and they're on demand, so you can watch them at any time. Um, if they require supplies, uh, they can send somebody to pick up a supply bag for that particular, um, craft or, um, exercise that we're doing. So, we really try and, and serve every single person in this community. We don't, we don't care if you can afford it, you know, we're gonna, um, make sure that you're included. So, this year, we introduced a fix-it clinic, and this was where people could bring their bicycles and have them fixed at the library. By, not by me, because I have no idea what I'm doing, but by people who actually know how to do that. We still have our swaps, so the next one is gonna be in June, and these are clothing swaps, so people can bring in items that they, um, aren't using anymore and swap them for ones that they are using. Um, I think the most popular and important one is our winter clothing swap because people can come in and get sweaters and coats, things that are quite expensive. Uh, we have services for everyone. We have homebound delivery, um, care kits, job resources. Um, this year, we started collecting for the St. Andrews Food Bank. Um, they are not in Flugerville proper, but they take our unhoused people in the winter, um, and they are the closest shelter, so, um, and Beth Davis, the former finance director, is the one that is, um, handling their donations. So, we do, uh, collect for them, and we had a Eagle Scout make a donation bin for the, um, for Paws, the Flugerville Animal Shelter, and we collect for them also.
And you have a sandperson guarding all of that?
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's upright by the hostess. If somebody's hungry, though, we're, we're not gonna say anything if you take, take something out. All right, I'm gonna turn it over to Daniel, who's gonna talk about electronic resources.
Hello, Mayor, Council. Um, you're probably aware that we do offer a lot of electronic resources. Our eBooks and streaming services continue to be very popular with the community. In fact, last fiscal year, uh, we had over 100,000 eBook checkouts for the first time. But we do offer a lot more than that as far as electronic resources. So, if somebody is looking for, uh, to do genealogy research or wants to add some skills to their resume, uh, wants to learn a new language or maybe get some homework help for their kids, uh, we have all that and a lot more available through our electronic resources. And the great thing about these, um, outside of Ancestry, which is the only one that you have to actually use it in the library building, the rest can be used anytime, anywhere, on any device with your library card. Uh, so, a lot of things available and a really easy access for the community as well. I also wanna talk a little bit about the Heritage House Museum. Um, we continue to work to preserve the history of Flugerville and to educate the community about that history. Uh, we work closely with our partner organization, the Heritage House Partners, um, to provide events and programs throughout the year. Uh, most recently, uh, youth services staff at the library held Farm Day. Um, we had about 1,000 people in attendance on the grounds around the museum, including at least one city council member, Rudy. Um, so, uh, we'll continue to look for ways to, um, uh, create exciting content to kind of teach people about the history of Flugerville, but also to preserve that history and to preserve the museum itself as it is a focal point for the city. Um, and as I mentioned, uh, before I mentioned the Heritage House Partners, one of the partnerships we have. I wanted to expand on that a little bit about our partnerships just to give you an idea of some of the behind-the-scenes we do. Um, this list of partners is, um, just kind of the tip of the iceberg, but it gives you an idea about the organizations we work with and what that allows us to achieve. Um, some of the partners, like the school district, you know, we share a common mission, so it makes sense we would work together to amplify our efforts. A lot of the other organizations provide an expertise that we simply don't have. So, a good example of that, uh, SCORE is an organization that provides our, um, teachers for our monthly small business workshops. So, leveraging these partnerships really allows us to expand our services into areas where we don't have that expertise. So, um, the library staff does a really good job of identifying needs and interests in the community and then finding organizations to help, uh, address those issues. Um, in addition, we get a lot of organizations that reach out to us directly. So, most recently, uh, we launched a Job Search Assistance Partnership, and that organization reached out to us because they looked over the city's comprehensive plan, saw that the library was focused on expanding our Job Search Assistance Program, so they wanted to reach out to us and help us with that goal. So, we're working on that together right now. So, we'll continue to leverage partnerships as we go forward because it's a great way for us to expand services and resources to a growing community.
Okay. Um, we still belong to a number of professional organizations and hold, um, officer positions in those organizations and subcommittees. And so now we're on our accomplishments. So, last year, um, we had a huge list of stuff that we were gonna accomplish, and we actually did it. So, um, one of the big things that we wanted to do last year was to introduce our book locker because that would allow people who, um, are working during the times that the library is open to be able to access resources, um, whenever they want. It has proven to be hugely successful. So, we are looking at for next year adding two more locker columns to that. Um, this year, we introduced our study pods because if you've seen the library, uh, you know, everywhere, we're, um, out of space, and we didn't have individual study rooms. So, we bought two study pods, one is ADA compliant, the other is, um, a single person, and they're hugely popular. So, I'm looking at getting a couple of more of the single-person ones. They're really not that expensive, not as expensive as I expected them to be. So, I'm excited about being able to offer a couple more study spaces.
Where are those located?
Um, when you come in and you go right past the CDs, they're there at that window. So, yeah, so they're facing, if you walked by, you could see into it. Um, the other one is in the, um, adult computer area, and same thing, it faces out.
Are those totally enclosed or just kind of a?
No, they're totally enclosed. They have glass fronts. They're ventilated, um, and they have connectivity.
I'm, I'm curious, do those come, uh, I guess, fully built or is that something that, it's like IKEA furniture, we have to put together or we get it?
It's, um, like IKEA furniture that I get somebody else to put.
Okay, okay.
I have a very nice handyman. Um, but yeah, they're really popular, and, um, they're great.
So, as popular as they probably are, so you have to sign up to, for a time slot or something?
Um, you can reserve a time slot online. We don't charge to reserve one for the study rooms. Uh, but if they're not being used, like anything else, it's yours come first.
Sure.
We are, um, excited about them also because particularly, they can all be moved around, but particularly, the single-person ones are very easy to move around. They're just on furniture sliders and used to move.
Campuses are using, universities too.
Mm-hmm. They're great.
We had somebody in today that was using one to do a virtual interview, so there's a lot of uses like that that provides for.
Um, other things that we did was expand the teen, um, print material, the children's and the adults by adding additional shelving. Um, we are going to do that next year also. Um, we are at a point now that we're gonna have to start going up. So, um, we're gonna get some shelving extensions to put on top of the uprights, and that'll give us another row of shelving on all of the adult, um, shelving. We could do the same in the kids, but I think it gets too high in the kids when we do that. Um, some other things that we're looking at, um, oh, I forgot to mention. We got new adult computers for the adult, um, area. They're awesome. IT was great about finding us these, um, amazing all-in-one computers. Um, and we got rid of our huge pods that we had the computers on, and now we have little individual pods that, um, give people more privacy and more space. But also, um, the computers can be very easily disconnected, and the whole pod can be moved. So, when we have our large events, we can actually just unplug the computers and move them out of the way. Um, so that gives us a little more event space. Um, and that's pretty much it. We did get a family place grant, um, with the Friends of the Library. So, if you come into the library in the children's area and in the courtyard, you'll see some interactive toys that we have now, um, super popular. And, um, that's it. Do you have any?
No, go ahead.
Any questions?
I had a question about your, uh, the, the options that are available on Libby and Hoopla, and how is that decided, um, are you, because it says central Texas that we're, you know, with. Like, who decides that just because, uh, we were in the middle of a series and then all of a sudden it disappeared?
Yeah, you can do that.
So, um, Libby and Hoopla have two different models. Hoopla is more is, uh, pay-per-use, so we have access to this giant collection of materials, and we only pay when somebody uses them. It makes it a little more difficult to budget for, um, because you don't know if, uh, use increases, then the cost increases, as opposed to Overdrive where you're buying a copy, you can control the cost a little more. So, with Libby, we did have to make some changes, um, to adjust to meet what we budgeted for this year. Um, but if there's ever a title that you come across that you used to have access to or you want to have access to, we can release some titles that we, we blocked because of cost issues. Um, and we hope the next fiscal year, we'll build that into our budget, so we'll be able to offer the entire collection once again.
Thank you. That was my next question, how do we do suggestions?
And then for, um, for Libby, um, for Overdrive, we're part of a consortium, so we have 60 different libraries that share a collection. We also have the ability to purchase, um, individual materials just for our library and that as well. So, we do both. So, we have two different platforms that kind of offer two different models, and we try to offer both because it, uh, offers a nice balance for the community.
With Libby, um, you have to be in a consortium if you have a population under 100,000, so. We are, um, building that advantage. It's called an advantage collection. That's the one that's just for our, um, users because we anticipate when we hit 100,000 people, we wanna take as much, um, with us as we can, so.
So, bouncing back to demographics, and I've, I'm sure I've asked this before, is, um, in terms of all the utilization and membership and so forth, uh, do we know what parts of the cities are more apt to use the library than others?
Um, we don't, we can, but we don't right now because of the zip code, because most of it's tracked by zip code.
Right.
Um, it is possible, though, and we have talked to GIS services about, um, maybe getting together with them and figuring that out, um, but we just haven't done it yet.
Okay. You're saying the vast majority of the people using the library are from the same zip code? But not the same neighborhood, so.
Right.
All right.
How would you request special, or, you know, ones that aren't available? Is there something on the website for people to do?
You can go into your account, um, and request there. Um, just indicate whether or not you want it to be an electronic resource, um, or a print resource, or if you want us to purchase it versus, um, borrowing it from another library.
And that's your online account when you go on the website? Okay, thank you.
Jennifer, how close are we? You talked about space. So, how close are we to capacity? Because I know for years, this council has talked about, um, another location to add addition to the satellite, whatever you wanna call it from there. And when I started seeing the shelving expansions and then putting these pods in, um, how close are we to busting it seems?
Um, we're busting, but, um, in that if we want to continue to grow the collection, which, um, is, is serving our population because it's what our users are demanding, um, we have to reduce public space in order to fit that in. So, we're, we're trying as much as we can not to do that by mounting single-phase shelving on the walls, going up an extra level on the shelving, um, and that sort of thing, and, and just trying to, to redefine spaces in furniture so that the furniture is a lot more mobile and, um, takes up less of the footprint, but still gives people, um, as much workroom as they need.
Well, I would say, uh, Mr. Mateo, if in the future, uh, we address the need for a library expansion, that it would be in the same location uh, because in my reference to my question earlier about demographics, it's kind of like an HEB. You build a brand-new HEB, and you're thinking it's gonna relieve this one over here. It doesn't. So, I would imagine that, again, what might happen is that we build a, a satellite on east of 130 or something, and you're still gonna have the same problem. You're still gonna be busting, so I think we need to look at some of those demographics, too.
Well, I have lots of ideas.
I do like the thought of some geographic equity in distance to drive to the library. So, that's a plus for looking at that. I mean, where I grew up, there was just a lot of small libraries around versus, like, one library. Um, you know, obviously, there's pros and cons to both.
Mm-hmm. Um, yeah, if you, if you do the math with some of the larger library, um, systems, it works, and this isn't, I don't think it's set in stone anywhere, but, um, it works out to be, um, a branch per 50,000 people.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Yeah.
Okay.
My biggest concern would be that if we were to do a branch, which I feel we should, I'm not going to lie, on the other side, I don't want the current library to kind of be the stepchild. You know, I don't want it to be kind of shabby and rundown, you know? I want people to have same access regardless of what part of Flugerville they live in.
Oh, I agree with that.
That's a very good point. Very good point.
Okay, Council, any other questions? All right, thank you very much, Jennifer and Daniel. Thank you very much for your presentation. Our next item is an executive session, item pursuant to Chapter 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, consultation with city attorney regarding lawsuit to N4's health and safety ordinances violations, ordinance violations at 19204 Quebrada Street Lane Avenue Boulevard, Flugerville, Texas. We are in executive session.